All right, the time is now 6:30 PM and I will call to order the meeting of the Cedarburg School Board, September 20, 2023. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and the town of Cedarburg as well as the News Graphic and the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So to begin, we're doing the recognitions first? Where's that? Oh, down here. Are we doing that first? Are we doing that?
Oh, no, you'll do yours first.
Okay. All right, so the first order of business is school board officers and committee nominations or committee members' appointments. So when Mr. Leach resigned, retired, then I automatically, as vice president, became president and left vacant the office of vice president. So we need nominations for vice president. We want to elect a vice president tonight. So I would take a nomination. I'll take any nominations.
I would like to nominate myself for the position of vice president.
Are there any other?
I'll second. Do you want to do all? Do you want to do several at once or just one?
Yeah, what we're going to do is what we did last time, which is however many nominations we get, we'll do the ballots, right? You've got ballots and we'll fill out the ballots and Brenda will count them up. We'll go from there.
I'd like to nominate Laura Strobel for vice president.
I would second that.
Okay, we've got two nominees. Anyone else? All right, let's have our vote. Brenda will bring the ballots. Just write, do you want us to sign them again?
No.
Nope, just write them right here. Cheers. Okay, thank you, everyone. So Laura's the vice president. Laura, is Laura currently an officer?
We treasurer.
So we need to nominate a new treasurer? Yep.
I'll nominate myself for that.
I will second.
I would nominate Elizabeth Charlin for that role.
I would second that.
Any others?
I have five votes for Elizabeth Charlin and two votes for Connie Kincaid.
All right, thank you. So we've got the officers handled. The next item is the committee assignments with the new board member. In board docs, you see that I shuffled some of the people around a little bit, not a whole lot. I tried to keep it in on the same committee they were on and add Nick to one. And then adding Nick as, Nick Silagie as the city school liaison. And so I entertain a motion to accept that as presented.
I would make a motion to accept it as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I have some discussion. As Laura is now the vice president of the school board, she is currently seated as a member of three categories or three committees as well. I would like to make a motion to remove Laura from the curriculum committee and add myself.
Any other discussion?
I just would like some clarification. There's been some discussion as to first alternate, second alternate, third alternate, fourth alternate, and I don't have an understanding that there is such thing as a first or second alternate. So if it's possible to get some feedback from members of the board as to how they're viewing that, that would be helpful for me.
All right, so we've got the motion to accept as presented with a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion carries five to two. Thank you. Number three, recognitions.
All right. This evening, we have three recognitions. The first recognition is to Rick Leach for his service on the school board for the past 14-plus years. As a first-time superintendent, I cannot express deeply enough my appreciation to Rick for helping me navigate the superintendency. His guidance and support helped to make this past school year an effective learning experience for me. During Rick's tenure, he served on numerous committees as well as board president. Rick, thank you for your commitment to the Cedarburg School District and the community as a whole. I also have here a State of Wisconsin citation by the Senate that I'd like to read. It says, "Now you know by these preses-- presidents," excuse me. "Whereas Rick Leach is retiring from the Cedarburg School Board after 14 years of public service, and whereas Rick Leach has served as the president of the Cedarburg School Board for over two years, and whereas during Rick Leach's tenure on the board, all five schools in the district achieved the highest score possible on the state report card, and whereas Rick Leach has served as a volunteer coach for the Ozakia Scholastic Shooting Sports, and whereas Rick Leach has also served the Cedarburg community as a Cedarburg police officer for 31 years, and whereas Rick Leach will go on to serve as co-president of his nonprofit organization, Scholastic Shooting Sports Foundation, an organization dedicated to providing shooting sports education to students around the United States. Now, therefore, the members of the Wisconsin State Legislature on the motion of Senator Dewey Strobel and Representative Rob Brooks do commend Rick Leach for his many years of public service to the citizens of Cedarburg and Ozakia County."
Oh, very nice.
Thank you. Real short, because I don't like long meetings.
We've got one for you too.
Oh, you have one for me?
If you're ready.
Yeah, go right ahead.
All right. So we've got an award for you here too in honor of your service on the school board. It's not nearly as impressive, and I don't have a declaration to read, but goes without saying, we really do appreciate your years of service and to the community and all the guidance and help you've given to the younger board members along the way. We're going to miss you a lot. Thank you.
Be careful, your gavel is going to make that fall off.
I just want to thank all of you, and it really, it was an honor to serve this many years in our district. And I just need to take this moment to thank all the past boards, current board, all of our past and current staff, because we sit at these meetings, but we know all the work gets done by our staff behind the scenes. And I just want to offer just a few points for all of you since I've been here so long. Every kid that was in the district when I started has now either moved on or has graduated from our district, so it was a good time for me to move on. But I just want to remind all of you to, as long as you continue to do what's best for our students, and as long as you continue to, you know, measure that with what's good for our staff and what's good for our taxpayers, you will continue to be successful. As I've traveled the country, when we first started, Kevin and I had conversations about wanting to be a destination district. And we always said, what is that and what does that look like? I can tell you, as I travel the country now, I've been in Pennsylvania, New York, Texas. And when they heard I was from Cedarburg, they didn't ask me about the festivals, they asked me about our quality schools. So people around the country have recognized the work that our staff and our students and our parents and everyone has put into having this great school district. So just continue with that and you'll be always successful. And stay off of hate book, because the bullies with the keyboards that blast you continually on Facebook, you notice none of them had their names in the running when we were looking for people to step up. And best wishes to you in doing that. But just remember that and just thank everybody and thank the voters, because it's truly been a humbling experience being able to serve our community. Thank you.
The second recognition is in regard to the upcoming Wisconsin School Board Week, which is officially October 1st through the 7th, 2023. In honor of the dedication of our school board members have toward the Cedarburg School District and our students, we would like to present each of you with a small box of cookies. We have those in front of you. Board members, as you enjoy your cookies, please be reminded of the impact you have on helping the Cedarburg educators provide a nurturing environment in which the students can develop into lifelong learners, to become responsible adults, and to achieve their goals and dreams. Thank you, Cedarburg School Board members. I'd also like to say, in my year now in this role, the time and dedication each of you spend in this role is truly admirable. It's my job, so, you know, that's what I do, all the conversations I have, but I have numerous conversations with many of you at all different times. And the dedication, the focus you give to our students and to this district, unless somebody's sitting in your seat, I don't think they realize the magnitude that you take upon yourselves and the dedication you have for the job. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clark.
You're welcome. These cookies were also from, which is a Cedarburg company.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, and the staff and everyone.
Oh, I've got some. All right. And finally, Mrs. Strobel will read this month's state proclamation.
The State of Wisconsin has declared the following proclamation. Gifted Education Month for October of 2023, and all proclamations are available on the district's board docs webpage. Thank you.
All right, consent agenda.
With regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on August 16th, 2023, the school board legal workshop on August 24th, 2023, the special school board meeting on September 13th, 2023, the budget and finance report, which includes the summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. DeRosa, Director of Human Resources, is here to provide an overview of the personnel report.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we'd like the board to take action on the resignation of Christina Diener, educator at CHS, and seeking approval for the contract of Stephanie Parker, educator at Thorson.
All right, that's a pretty short report. Good. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. Is there any discussion on it?
I'm wondering if it would be possible to just separate these out for individual motions for the minutes for August, minutes for the 24th, minutes for the 13th. I'm agreeable to different wording on that front, but I'm hesitant to vote yes on everything. So specifically, I'd like to have the legal workshop perhaps in a different motion.
Well, if it's not correct, if there's a problem with it, we probably would want to know about that. Do you want to?
Yeah, my general feeling is that what the board received was a legal presentation rather than workshop. So I recognize I may be being very particular on that front. So if others don't feel that way, that's fine. I'll likely just vote no when we get to the, you know, the consent piece. But a workshop entails discussion, and we didn't have discussion noted in that agenda. And in my view, what is now available publicly and to Mr. Silagie as a board member is a presentation. Those are my thoughts on that.
Okay, I believe it was noticed as a workshop. I'm not sure how we would be able to change the minutes, but if you have an objection to that, then I think that's probably a good idea. We could carve that out for you.
I'd appreciate that.
And then what about, you mentioned the September 13 one?
No, I think if the motion could just be to single out that one, that one's, that is fine by me. I'm okay with the rest of what's in there.
So would you like to amend your motion to approve the consent agenda minus item B?
I would amend my motion of approval of the consent agenda minus item B.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I will second that.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now I would entertain a motion to accept, I'm sorry, to approve the consent agenda, item B, the school board legal, minutes of the school board legal workshop, August 24, 2023.
I will make that motion to approve the school board legal workshop on August 24, 2023, the approval of the minutes.
I second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nay. All right, motion carries six, one. Now we have the superintendent's report, Dr. Clark.
All right. It is hard to believe it, but we are already in the fourth week of the school year, although it helps when the first week was only one day. I have had an opportunity to visit all of our schools multiple times this year, and I'm continually impressed with the dedication each of our staff members has toward our students. On another note, if you didn't know it, this is homecoming week at Cedarburg High School. In fact, tonight is the annual Powderpuff Football Game. This is a great week at the high school where students have the opportunity to show their pride. This Friday will be the annual homecoming parade, which is a community event. All right. Brenda? In lieu of Brian Braxma, Director of Buildings and Grounds, I would like to spend a few minutes to provide the board with a Buildings and Grounds summer work update. As soon as we get this on, I'll click through it. This past summer, beyond the normal cleaning of each room in each building, the B&amp;G Department took on seven major projects. Pause. Yep, it's coming. All right.
They're giving them two or three cues now.
Of the seven projects, one of the projects was at Webster Middle School, south doors two and five, and you can kind of see the picture here. They had been, they'd seen many years of good use, let's put it that way, and those were replaced, and so now we have original exterior doors. Not only does it look nicer, but it provides a higher degree of safety at the building. At the Webster East entrance, which is where parents generally are dropping off their kids, you'll see the concrete, and you can see on the left-hand side is, in the center on the left-hand side is what the concrete used to look like, and now that's all new concrete there and a much safer way for kids to come in and out, and it'll definitely be easier for the snow removal in the winter. Likewise, Webster, there was some carpet replacement, and 12 different classrooms received new carpet. Again, that carpet had seen a lot of love over the years, and now we're ready for numerous more years of the new carpet. The Parkview Woods, this actually had been almost a year-long project. There had been some concern by community members about some of the dead ash trees that were in that area over last school year. The B&amp;G Department, along with some contractors, took out a lot of the dead trees. Again, in the summer, they continued to clean that up and looking to provide opportunities to do some new plantings both this fall and next spring and get that back to what it once looked like. The CHS Media Lab, which is directly behind us, and if you haven't had an opportunity to take a look at it yet, after the board meeting, I'd encourage you to walk down there and at least peek in. That has been remodeled into the new Media Lab. It's set up with state-of-the-art computers and technology to help our students be able to create some good multimedia projects. That is a skill that goes beyond just the high school and classroom presentations to things that you can carry on into their future life. Likewise, the, not likewise, the CHS baseball dugouts also had to be revamped this summer. There was some water leakage in there that had caused some damage to the floors and walls, and that was all redone and built a little bit better to withstand the rain and the wind. And then one that we all, was all near and dear to our hearts, one where it's a lot of money and we don't really see it, but was the Westlon Roof. That was a full summer project, and honestly, there was a little nip and tuck there towards the end of the year if it was going to get done. The company did bring in three crews the last couple of weekends, and they got that all taken care of. And so one of the major changes there was that was an entirely flat roof prior to the re-roofing. Now there is a ramping to it, so the water will drain, and we shouldn't get any of the sitting water, standing water, which then has a tendency to cause damage. And that, again, was all finished by the time school started. And for all of this and all the other work that they do, I would like to send a shout out to all the Buildings and Grounds crews, thanking them for their support. They do a lot around here, they're cleaning, they make sure that we have some of the finest facilities for our students to be able to learn in and for our educators to be able to teach them.
Fantastic, thank you.
I just had a quick question. For the Parkview Wood cleanup?
Yes.
Was that also one where there were parent volunteers or just the B&amp;G crew? How did that work out?
I believe they worked with the green team also.
The green team, that's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Okay.
And the plan is to work with the green team for some of the plantings.
Okay.
Both this fall and in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Finally, in terms of the presentation, my report, is in place of Karen Amundson, Director of Student Services, who is headed to a conference up north, I'll provide an overview of the district's seclusion and restraint annual report pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 118.305 4C. 2019 Wisconsin Act 118 requires the district to report the seclusion and restraint data annually by October 1st to the school board. For each school, the district must include in the report the following information. The number of incidents of seclusion in the school during the previous school year, the total number of students who were involved in the incidents of seclusion, the number of students with disabilities who were involved in the incidents of seclusion, the number of incidents of physical restraint in the school during the previous school year, the total number of students who were involved in the incidents of physical restraint, and the number of students with disabilities who were involved in the incidents of physical restraint. You have that information in your board packet. The district has internal trainers who have provided nonviolent crisis intervention training following the Crisis Prevention Institute CPI Training Protocol. Training to staff was offered in November of 2022, where each school had teams of teachers trained or recertified in the CPI techniques. Additional training will be provided during the 2023-24 school year. A question has been asked regarding the inclusion of the Cedarburg Police Department in the CPI training. While there has been a brief discussion, no training has been scheduled at this point. That concludes my report.
Does Karen have the data from last year to this year, meaning the 2021-22 versus 22? Sorry. I think you get what I'm saying.
Yes.
I apologize.
The 21-22 data was in the last year's report. She doesn't have it compared though.
Okay. And then as far as connecting with the CPD on this, that was a question I had asked board members. That's something that I just checked in with Chief McNerney about last year as well. So just for transparency's sake, I wanted to share that with you. I'd like to hear that our officers are being invited to those trainings. So that's where that's at.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, is that the end of your superintendent report, Dr. Clark? All right. So we come to the public comment section, and I've got, nobody signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to make public comment today? There is not. So we'll move to recommendations, Dr. Clark.
All right. This evening, we have five recommendations. The first recommendation is in regard to the use of iReady personalized instruction platform for Cedarburg students in grades K through eight. iReady personalized learning provides personalized instructional opportunities for students in reading and math based upon the identified needs resulting from the student's performance on the iReady diagnostic assessment. As we prepare to use this tool with students, we have an implementation plan which will be used to ensure that all of the content resources have been reviewed and aligned with Cedarburg standards. We will also be seeking permission from parents to authorize the use of iReady personalized learning platform with their students. There is a corresponding letter that will be sent to families upon the board's approval of iReady personalized instruction, and that letter is in the board packet. To provide a little additional background and to answer some questions that have been asked over the last few days, the cost of the iReady personalized instruction is approximately Not sure why it's said approximately there, but that is the cost. iReady actually replaces DreamBox for math, which costs $29,230, and Lexia for reading, which costs $39,880, for a total cost of $69,110 during the 2021-22 school year. On another note regarding the cost, the iReady platform would be paid for using CEIS funds, which can only be spent on tools that are specifically used to ensure that students do not need special education services in the future. In addition, the contract-- In addition, the contract for the use of iReady is signed on an annual basis, so we'll be reviewing its renewal annually and in conjunction with the annual district assessment plan, which will come before the board each May. I have Alan Grove, Director of Curriculum Instruction, and Kirsten Collins, Director of Technology and Assessment, here to help answer any questions the board may have.
I think most of our questions, Kim, at least recent questions, were around the data that's generated by the use of the product, and we covered a lot of that over the last several curriculum committee meetings. I think my concern was that the families, our families, get meaningful disclosure of the data, of what's going to happen or could happen with the data, where the, and by data, I mean the student data, indirectly generated data regarding the device, the device that's used, those kinds of things. And so I think we've done a good job in the letter to the parents of highlighting and describing the areas where the data, data management might be, you know, not as good as we want it, but it's still good. It's just a matter of disclosing to the families. So I would encourage families to read that and, you know, consider that information and make an informed decision.
I do have some other questions, but do we need to make a motion to discuss? Can I go ahead and ask them?
I guess you can ask them a question, sure.
Okay. So, some of the concerns I have is just opening the door to having the kids online and having instruction coming through artificial means rather than teachers' hands-on, and I think, I guess I'm just looking for a little information about the balance of that because that's a lot of time potentially that they could be spending interacting with the computer rather than with the teacher, and I do see the benefit of getting some of that feedback that can be coming through that online content, but I guess my concerns are twofold. One, that it kind of opens the door to a lot of time being spent on that rather than directly interacting with teachers, and two, keeping up with the content of that, it's, it could be really cumbersome for the district to take that on when all of the content is coming through someone outside the district, creating questions and stories, and there's no way for us to get our hands on that, I guess, on a consistent basis or a practical basis, and it's always changing. So that was one of my concerns.
And I think, Alan, maybe you could come up and address some of those. Again, we've talked a little bit about when these, when iReady would be used. This is not necessarily to be used during the regular core content time that is designated in the blocks. Each elementary building in particular has a 30-minute session for support and enrichment each day, 30 minutes for reading, 30 minutes for math, and that is more where this time is geared toward. And so, Alan, if you wanted to expand on that?
I think what I would say is, so if you're a classroom teacher, you've got, you know, 20, 25 students in your classroom, core instruction, you're always leading that. So all students are getting really customized instruction for your class. This is that really personalized component. So if I'm teaching inside the classroom, I might be meeting with a small group, but I also may have students now on iReady, which would be more personalized for them specifically. So the beauty of it is that it's customized based on their assessment results just for them, and having used Math for so many years in the system, this is a piece that was not really easily navigated. Teachers had to create the content. So this is created for them based on their assessment results. It's ready to go, personalized for each individual student in the classroom. So as a teacher is orchestrating them working on iReady, they can also be meeting with small groups. So it's really incredibly efficient, keeps things moving rapidly for students, it's like you don't skip a beat. So I prepared for the lesson today, I taught you today, and now when we go into this more personalized part of the ELA portion or Math, there's something special just for you, and I can also then, as a teacher, slide side-by-side with you, I can still do small group instruction, and I'm able to rapidly meet a lot of student needs at the same time. So, again, going back, so when I got hired into the system, this is my ninth year, Map had been here for many years, and I was very cautious to, because coming out of another system that had done something different, cautious to make any adjustments here, but truly, Map had its benefits, it gave you really robust, it gave us really robust data, but for me as a teacher to take action on it was incredibly cumbersome. So with that, listening to teachers and really seeing this just, you know, used now in the classroom, iReady has really rapidly brought content specific for students that just can't be paralleled with or matched with Map.
And one of the things that I would add, especially at the K-2 realm, we are no longer one-to-one, and so it's, you know, we're two-to-one in terms of the devices. So, you know, I know one of the concerns is, well, what if they just put all the kids on it? Well, that's not even actually possible to do that for all the K through two classes in each school, just because we don't have, you know, we're not one-to-one. We are one-to-one, three through eight, or actually, three through 12, but especially at the lower levels where there is a need for much more, you know, human interaction, one-to-one, as kids learn to read and develop some of their skills there too, so.
As someone who's been in the classroom, if you, teachers do the best they can to provide the most personalized curriculum they can for their students, but when you do have 20 to 25 students, and especially if you're at the middle school and you have multiple different classes rotating throughout the day, iReady, which my daughter has used the personalized, she was part of the pilot back when she was in Parkview, and now she's at Webster, you have the ability to say, going into your comm arts class, they're meeting for what, hour forty-five minutes usually? So you roll into your class, the first 20 minutes, usually what will happen is the teacher will pull a group of students out, four or five students, work with them on particular things, but then instead of the other students just being told, okay, go read or go work on this, a lot of the times, it's go into iReady, and it's personalized to you. The nice thing about that then is when parents come in for parent-teacher conferences, there's even more hard data to show parents, you know, where their child is at, where they may be struggling, where they may need additional help, and that, in terms of time, really is helpful to instruction, to the teachers especially.
I agree with Kate on her concerns, and I wasn't able to be at the curriculum meeting, but I went over the PowerPoint, and I noticed that the goal was 30 to 49 minutes per subject per week. Is that?
That's accurate.
So will that be tracked, just to make sure, you know, I mean, on that scenario, Kate, you would, I just would never hope that there's one student who always seems to just be very quiet and goes on his device, and he's on iReady. I would just like to, is there some sort of tracking, just to make sure it's evenly distributed amongst all students who are using it?
It is actually. So as a teacher, I can see how many minutes my students are spending on iReady. So it is something that, the research has bared out that when students are under the roof and you have them using a tool that's customized like that, when you're present as a teacher, achievement goes up. So I can, those minutes are important. So we're watching that students are actually engaging and supporting them wherever they need it within that content. iReady also provides you as a teacher areas that perhaps, even though the content was customized for you, it's, let's just say, still challenging for you to a point where you need to actually intervene and provide additional support. So it's a very informative tool for, not only just for the student to see how they're learning and growing, but also for the teacher to provide even additional customized support for students. So those minutes are provided to the teachers so they know how all their students are or aren't using iReady.
I would like to see a report of that from the pilot. I had asked the August 30th Curriculum Committee of that data if it's available, if reportable, and I was told it was, and that would just be really interesting to see how, how many minutes and how that related to results in the iReady assessments or other diagnostics that are done within the district and compare it to this year. So I would be very interested in seeing that. I have a concern. I know, Dr. Clark, you said that here we have a plan for reviewing the content. I don't see a plan in it. I see kind of like a rubric, and I see like, here's a list of hundreds of different books that are available within the iReady Personalized Learning Instruction. I feel like I was kind of blindsided on this, to be honest. I had asked at the last curriculum committee meeting, well, you know, what's in this content? You know, I had seen some in the classroom when I visited classrooms last school year during the pilot, and I was told, oh, it's videos with monsters in it, it's little graphics, it's little animations with monsters in it, nothing controversial, there's no people. And that is true for like phonics, phonemic awareness in that K through two, K through three level, but just kind of going in it, as a board member with the logins that we were given following that, I mean, there's hundreds and hundreds of books that are in there as part of reading comprehension lessons and different types of topics, and I'm like, who's, who was reviewing this? Like, there were just hundreds of them, and like, I'm not sure how sustainable that is. You know, I asked, hey, how is Raz Kids monitored? Because that's like an ebook app type thing, reading app. Like, oh, we're not using Raz Kids anymore because it's too hard to keep up with reviewing all the content that's in it. So, you know, if there is a plan to review that, I'm interested in hearing what that is, but I just don't know how we could have gone from August 30th saying that it's animated videos to now having access to hundreds of books, some of which I've reviewed, most of which I haven't because there's just so many, and saying that it's like ready to go for the students. I'm not seeing that.
So as the content in the ELA area in particular becomes more around comprehension, there's a great deal, like, I was looking at all the titles, there's a heavy, a higher volume, it appears, in of nonfiction text, so not, you're not going to see what you're describing, that animation and some of those things probably sitting more within the math area. So the, we had some preliminary discussion regarding how would we vet this, because we have an administrative guideline that sets us up to vet content, the tools there. So I've already conferred with others in the system on how we would approach this, perhaps by grade level. So in my mind, I've already have somewhat of a formulated plan on how I can deploy teams to quickly vet the titles. So I myself started going in and just started looking at the titles, looking at who are the authors. I will say, again, a great deal of content is nonfiction, not necessary, students are not necessarily reading whole books, it's more excerpts, much like on the Ford exam where you get an excerpt into the exam, you're reading and then answering comprehension questions or inferential kinds of questions. So the guarantee we would provide is that we would look at those titles, we would do our vetting process in the system to ensure that the content is acceptable based on our curriculum, and we can actually remove content where and if we feel it's not appropriate.
Is that what's typically done, like just strictly looking at a title of a book and an author? When I was looking at them, I focused mostly on the third grade. There were a couple that were like an excerpt from a book that's like a published book, you could find it on Amazon or on a library or whatever, and I kind of looked up that book and got a summary of it and looked at the excerpt, it was interesting. But then most of the books that were in there, and this is like the third grade reading comprehension, ones were, looked like they were, I would guess, like, created for iReady, like the author, like you can't buy that book on Amazon. It was like a little short story about, for example, there was a short story about a student in a, what do they call it, Learning for Justice Club. That was in the New Lunch Buddies by Zeke Shepherd, in the identifying perspective about a topic, third grade lesson, it was about a student in the Learning for Justice Club. And I couldn't find a spot where you could like buy that book and put it in the library, it looked like it was made for iReady, so I don't know.
I too skimmed and started looking at titles and perhaps the themes of some of these books, and we, and I am well aware that there are areas where the district will exercise more caution, where perspective can come through stronger. When you're looking at nonfiction content, these libraries filled with tons of nonfiction about places and people and history, and it's just more factual information, we might back, we might not have to dig into that as much as some of these other areas where you would have content that could have something that was self-created by iReady. In a most recent meeting with them though, I would say that, and as I'm looking at the titles, I did not hear a lot of that kind of content in there. So I started looking at the book titles and authors, and I could, one after the other, finding them on the web. So, again, in those cases where there would be, let's just say that if iReady created something, we would probably suspend some of those areas, which is the feature that we are given as a district to say, nope, we're not, we're going to close that down, much like what we did with Impact Social Studies. So we're prepared to exercise caution and err on that because there's such a high volume of content available to our students.
So what is the plan then?
So the plan would be that, based on what the board's decision is here this evening, the district would be prepared to not open up personalized learning until we're ready. So we had some preliminary discussion about setting a date out a few weeks to give the system time to start going in grade by grade and vetting that content.
I guess, I, so what would the plan be for vetting? Is there, I didn't really see that either, you know, so if we have to explain it to somebody or if we have to, because it's probably something we have to do kind of ongoing, I would imagine, or yearly, what does it entail? Is it going to be like a written plan somewhere? Is it, are you going to adopt some of the guidelines you use for improving other material? What's the actual plan?
Great question. So I think we have at our disposal, first of all, we've got the rubric, so that clearly defines content that we would exclude from any student. We have some of the social studies guidelines that have been created that, even though that's a work in progress, that too will guide some of the content. We have the Cedarburg standards that guide content in our system. So the teams, much like what we did, so right now with social studies, so I've got teams across the system, kindergarten through eighth grade, that are meeting, have a schedule as to, we're preparing this particular unit to be taught at this particular time. This is a team that's assigned the preparation of the unit, the unit will be shared with all the teachers at that grade level and be prepared to teach it when that time comes. So that's, that kind of methodology is what we'd be using in the same area. So we would, that kind of, that kind of organization, I feel like will prepare us to systematically prepare by grade level which books we would consider or not consider for iReady.
So being that we have been using this, obviously it has been piloted, and I know many of our parents are paying attention to what their kids are covering. I know I paid attention to what my daughter was doing in iReady when, you know, she was at home during non-school hours. Have there been any complaints?
I would say none that have come to me.
Thank you. Kate, can you talk a little bit about how you, how were you able to see what content she had gone into?
So my daughter, she tends to like to get ahead and get things done. So she had the ability to obviously do her iReady sometimes during PAW time, which is kind of, I guess you could call homeroom, second period at Webster. You also have the ability to do these things at home as well as lessons. And so she was doing her math and her reading iReads at home on her home computer, and I was able to see what she was working through, and it largely does, especially the texts, as Alan has said, they read like, wow, gosh, like the forward testing or like a passage you would get on a pre-ACT, read this passage, find this main point. It's not, I wouldn't say it's teaching content except for math. Obviously, math, you're teaching, you're teaching process and you're covering process, but when it comes to English or comm arts, it's very much so teaching basic principles and not necessarily content, if that makes sense.
So if a child is not working on it at home, parents don't really have access to what books they're choosing and what's in the books?
Well, they're not necessarily choosing through iReady. It's all pre-planned based off of where that child is level-wise. So it's not something where they're choosing what they're reading, the program is giving them, you know, the specific content area to cover a particular skill.
Wasn't there a choice of like 10 different topics to choose? There was civics, there was...
So there's your nonfiction coming through multiple content areas, which is a strength. So it's not, we're just not, we're not talking about fiction here, so it's all content areas. So it's a really rich experience for students, learning to apply their literacy skills in reading across the content areas. And, again, I think the reassurance we give the board and the community is... And, again, I think the reassurance we give the board and the community is that we would look and do our due diligence to vet those titles and the authors of the content before that was released to students. And where there is unknowns, if there was some content developed by iReady where we don't know the author, we don't know the content, and we don't perhaps even have the bandwidth that rapidly to turn that around, we'll close some of those items down. And then, we can always go back to them. So, we were told that we have the rights to do that, and we would exercise that right then, just to make sure, safeguard, you get parents reassurance that we've looked at these as close as we can.
It sounds like a lot of work because what I saw was the iReady program will kind of automatically, or the AI in it will determine the next excerpt that gets read based on the student's performance and the data harvest from the answering. So, I think you gave us something that was like 72 pages of titles. How, I'll go back to the same question, like, what's the plan to do with that? I mean, every time there's a change or every time there's a, the new year comes around or they added, you know, a new piece for a certain type of question, are we watching? Is that what the plan is to watch that, put eyes on it?
So, we've been told that they update it a couple times a year, and that we would be notified when there are updates that come. And then, yeah, we would go back through the vetting process. I don't know, Alan, if you wanted to go in a little more detail in terms of just working with the coaches and teacher teams how to do that, our initial plan right now, if given approval, would be to, and I've forgotten the dates, I had them in the document there, open up MAP sooner than, I think it's the 20th or 29th or something like that for ELA to give time for us to get a nice chunk of it reviewed, if not all of it reviewed. And then, as Alan said, only opening up the lessons that have been reviewed. So, Dr. Clark and I, and Kirsten Collins, we discussed this before this meeting. So, various things, in my mind, because of my position, I'm thinking about how am I going to deploy, who am I going to deploy to do this work? And so, it is, there's no denying that this isn't going to be a lot of work. It's not like, boom, it's just going to be done overnight. So, I'm trying to be very thoughtful and respectful of people's time and how to efficiently do it. And certainly, we have literacy coaches at all the buildings, elementary and the middle school. And so, instantly, there is one team that I could convene to help with this. Similar to our library collections, which have been vetted through MACN, our collections at all the schools are actually segmented by genre. We know what's in there. We have tools available to us that can help accelerate some of this work as well. So, even I, today, just like, just kind of ticking through the titles, looking at the authors, who are they, what else have they published, becoming familiar with them. So, we will, we would exercise that kind of thoughtful, come together, let's look at the project, and how can we deploy this, and how quickly can we get this out to students? We feel strongly that it's worth the effort at the end of the day. When a student comes to school and they step into a literacy classroom, their teachers put a lot of thought into the instruction that they're providing their students. This customized piece is just one layer that just moves super efficient. So, we really feel that makes a difference for our students, and it gives us an edge in helping them to grow. The system helps us to identify what their needs are. We use that data. The data helps to inform the content they get. So, we're willing to roll up our sleeves to make this happen, if the board chooses.
I think probably the biggest, like, hot button issue is the controversial, this section, or the criterion, controversial nature of the content. Because we've been very careful in the last few years to remain, you know, viewpoint neutral and to stay away from political and controversial topics, as far as like, from a viewpoint perspective, obviously not from a discussion. But the rubric, it discusses whether the content could possibly create some controversy on a moral or ethical grounds and by various, like, one of them says, but only from those who hold views that commonly help in our community. The other one says, majority of people. How do you determine that? It sounds like kind of a subjective standard.
Similar to what we'll be doing with Impact Social Studies. So, if we all teach the same grade level together, if there were the resource, the segment of the resource that has the more current events in it, based on Cedarburg standards, based on the social studies guidelines, we would vet that together. So, we're aware also of topics and themes that we're all having to navigate where perspectives are really varied. So, we understand the maturity level of our students and know at what grade level it's appropriate for that topic to be discussed or not. So, kind of, as I said, as I started looking through, there may be a particular segment of the collection in iReady we might be more apt to omit more of than have more of. So, we'll, we would dig into that and figure that out.
So, you envisioning some kind of guidelines, like, within the social studies?
We would. I would revisit the rubric. I would revisit the social studies guidelines. We talk about themes and topics that, again, where there's really exceptional diverse opinion, and especially for the grade and age of the students that are being taught. We want to stay away from things that are not Cedarburg standards.
So, I guess to answer maybe Elizabeth's question, this rubric or criterion rating of instruction materials, it's not the end plan. This is a tool, but you're still, it's kind of a work in progress at this point, on how are you going to do it?
You're correct. Yeah, I think, oh, go ahead. Oh, well, I was just going to say, we didn't want to get too far in front of you. I mean, we thought this through. We formulated some ideas. So, based on the board's decision this evening, once that occurs, it will help us to set things in motion, should it go in that direction. And, again, I just want you to know, like, with social studies, we had, before the school year ended, we got teacher feedback, administrator feedback, and we delayed the start of social studies instruction in most of the elementary grades and did more science to give us time to deploy the plan. So, my head thinks that way, others think that way. So, we're, based on your decision, we will come up with a plan that we can actually do.
So, if there is a third grader who's doing very, very well, will they always stay in with the third grade content? Because they may be doing very well, but from a maturity standpoint, maybe they can't handle fifth grade content, you know? So, do they stay within their grade level?
That's a great question. So, the content that they are provided will, if their literacy performance is in the fourth grade level, fourth grade content will emerge. It's much like in our ELA, even with our current Fanta's and Penelope's Literacy Collaborative, students, there's no ceiling. So, students, their reading performance might warrant them having books at a higher level. We there have always remained very cautious about themes and content in those books because even though you can read at this particular level, not all, the content in that level may not be appropriate for you. So, that kind of vetting will be considered as we look at fourth grade and all those grades. So, we can be confident that we have safeguarded what's being provided to students, whatever grade that they're in, even if they're stretching out of their grade into the grade above them.
Is this final plan something that would be, you're anticipating would be presented at like the curriculum committee or something like that to my social studies?
Gladly.
So, how different is the assessment portion, which we've already approved, from the actual lessons? I just, you know, I was just trying to, you know, look around and just on the internet and just little comments here and there, and just some things that were mentioned, and I thought they're valid just to raise, is that, I mean, some, you know, children like your daughter Kate probably excels at this and loves it, and there are other students who are bored with it. And then, it comes that they are so used to that, by the time it comes to mid-assessment period, and they're just kind of bored. They don't even challenge themselves on it, and so, they get moved to a lower tier than they technically should. Again, it's just something I'm going to raise because I read about it, that that's an issue.
I know from what I've heard from elementary schools at the time and middle schools now, they are extremely happy that Dreambox and Alexia are gone, like, awaited that Dreambox and Alexia are gone. So, already, I've heard from quite a few students that iReady is a step up from what we did have.
That might be something, Laura, that the teacher would be alert to, right? If the teacher knows that a student has a certain, a certain performance level and it's not matching the iReady, what's going on in iReady, maybe is that something that I still tell from the data?
Absolutely.
That was another con, though, that was reported. And, again, I don't know if this is valid or not, but they said that teachers only get, like, the online, an online report with the end result, that they don't actually get to see what the students are doing well on and what they're getting wrong. So, it's kind of difficult to really, when you're in a classroom with a student, you're, you know, grading a manual test, you see exactly what they did right, what they did wrong. And with this, they're just getting the end result. And so, it can be a little challenging for the teacher to know where this student is really missing the boat.
Yeah, with the assessment, there's quite a bit of data down to the standard level for what, to show what students know, what they're instructional ready for with a specific standard. It creates instructional groupings, the assessment does. So, as a teacher, if I know I'm going to teach this standard in class tomorrow, I can go into iReady and say, okay, here's my class, I want to teach this standard. It will group your students, and to those who are instructional ready, to another group. It's actually four-tier groups. And what this group needs prior, what this group will need, and then, how do you extend for this group of students who's beyond? So, there's quite a bit of data there. The other thing that we have when you're talking about that, kind of that disinterest with students over time, we're working very closely with our teachers, with our professional development. We're in year two, there's certain types of professional development and things that we do before the test. We're implementing a practice called data chats with students. And here's where we're working on, here's an area of strength for you, and here's the area of growth, you're doing really well with this. So, data chats happen before we take an assessment. They happen within personalized learning. So, at different points within a student's, working through these lessons, teachers have templates and things, or checklist guidelines of how to interact with a student, to have a conversation about what they're doing well, how they're feeling about it, what do their minutes look like, and how can we focus our time? When students are participating in the personalized instruction, teachers are in the portal looking at how students are doing, they're tracking those minutes. So, if you think we need 30 to 49, 45 minutes a week, that's six to nine minutes a day. And it's not really going to be each day possibly for students, or maybe it is. But the teachers go in to the portal often to make sure we don't have any warning flags. This student seems to be struggling in an area where it's taking longer for them to get through some content. We get a yellow flag, and we say, this student needs some attention. So, you can go in at the end of the day and go, okay, I'm going to pull that student or this group of students and see how they're doing and talk to them. And then, if a student has too much trouble, or sometimes they don't pay attention to the lesson and try to do a quiz that's within the lesson to see how they, did they learn that, sometimes they don't pay attention to the lesson and they don't do well. They get two tries to show their proficiency, and if they don't do well, they'll get a red X. That domain, that area, is actually shut off. So, students can't proceed there because you need a teacher intervention. You need a teacher to come in and say, hey, what's going on here? So, that's the data chat piece that we're really working on this year. We did some of it last year. But in year two and in implementation, those are the fine-tuning things that we're focusing on.
I'm sure that tool is pretty good, especially since you've got a lot of students who don't want to ask for help or don't want to admit that they're struggling, and if there's something on the backend that triggers the teacher to say, hey, you know, check on them.
And it's not something that, for a student, is out of the norm to be pulled into a group with your teacher. That's our workshop model. And so, it's not like they're, hmm, these kids aren't doing well, they're being pulled in. It's just a natural occurrence to have conversation around your learning with your teacher.
Can I ask, how are we going to measure the benefit?
So, we have a few kind of anecdotal pieces that we generally pull feedback from teachers. And we did that this year, and we had that small, small group that did a couple sessions the year prior, and just anecdotal feedback, asking questions that way. But we're really looking at what, how did our students perform on our forward exam, and that'll be three through eight, and seeing what that looks like with their iReady minutes and instruction and pieces like that. Is there a correlation there? You'll see our data soon. And we have good data. We have really good data. And it'll be interesting to show you that, see what you can see. We'll show both our iReady data and our forward data, so you can kind of see what it looks like, once we do that data look, which I think is next month.
So, if we just had the iReady testing and not any of the personalized learning, essentially, what would happen is a student would take the iReady testing, they would get their score, and then, any assistance in those areas where they're showing need, the teacher themselves would have to do that individual work for every single student to figure out exactly what they need and when, which is a lot of work.
But don't they gather them in groups, though? I thought in the, at least this on the elementary school, there is time built into the day as a Pi time, probably, where they know this group of, you know, you have the different grades and you bring these couple in.
We have intervention group time and extension.
Right, right. So, I mean, I...
But the materials that, the struggle we had when we had MAP was everything needed to be teacher-created, and now, I got to go find materials and different things for these students to do. That data that we have, moving to action, to act on that, to help students, was very difficult. That learning curve or that work curve was huge.
Well, and I'm sure we'd have less control over that as well, if it was...
I would agree with that.
...individually chosen by the teacher versus something like this where it is programmed.
Yes.
Except that you'd see it in the classroom. I mean, this is...
Parents wouldn't see that in the classroom. Parents wouldn't see the individual work that the teacher is doing with those particular students. That would all be done in the classroom at a table. So, parents wouldn't necessarily see any of that, would they?
But it would be material that would be brought into the classroom versus the student going off online and nobody seeing it. I think that's my concern. And correct me if I'm wrong, I just want to make sure I have the time right. We're talking about 30 to 49 minutes per student per week in ELA and in math?
In each, yep.
So, that works out to like five to 10 minutes per day. When I think about the practicality of truly looking at what the content is, are we getting the benefit of how much work that's going to be on an ongoing basis? To have, like, I understand the appeal of having it all kind of created, but a part of me wonders if we're just going to wind up teaching to the iReady test. And, secondly, it's, are we opening our kids up to all of this online instruction with all the pitfalls with the data for five to 10 minutes a day? I'm not sure I'm on board with that.
I don't know. As an educator, the more data I can get on exactly where my student is every single day, I will take it hands down. You do your iReady testing at certain times of the year, and in between those times, you don't really have that kind of data coming in as to where that student's at and whether or not what you are doing is beneficial to them. You know, you have to wait then until that next time around when iReady testing comes in. And quite frankly, I have a lot of college students who would need something like this that keeps them, like, so that I can check and see, okay, do you actually know what you're talking about?
I mean, there are assessments, I mean, this isn't the only thing that kids are getting evaluated on. This is just enrichment, I believe.
The difference between this and forward is forward is looking at, forward looks more at the student grades as a whole, the students operating as a whole. iReady is looking specifically at each individual child. And that's something teachers in class are discussing, if our population keeps growing and we keep adding workers into the classroom, the parents who have come to appreciate small class sizes and that individual work, I mean, it's just, it's getting more and more difficult for educators every day. And they have something that is actually personalized to your child, especially when that content is going to be weighed against the rubrics that we have and the standards that we have, like all of our other content is. that we have, like all of our other content is. And the benefits, I think, par outweigh. I mean, you think about it this way, if you've got a middle schooler or a high schooler being assigned a research paper, they're going off on the internet finding who knows what and reading, you know.
There's a little bit of, this is, there's a little bit of a difference of the school presenting it to them, though. I mean, that, there's a difference.
Right, since this is getting like the Cedarburg stamp of approval, we are approving the content that's in this.
But it also proves their ability to do research on the internet as well, to give them that. We're giving them access to those things with district computers. So you have to, I'm just saying, I trust our administrators and the teachers who are administering these things to know what's appropriate and not, you know, what's not appropriate, especially since we're trusting them to things like impact in social studies and whatnot, that this isn't going to be just the three for all, that there are, they are going to be looking at these things. And when, when was the anticipated start date or the hope, the hope that would start with this?
So if we go forward with this, we'd probably recommend we start math soon. We need time to get that approval. And I think if we did a period of time, two weeks, or to get the approval, and so October ninth, I think, is about that time, starting math. And then pushing reading content, giving us at least a month, so that would be end of October, starting reading, if we can get through it.
So we've got, my understanding is that this is a tool, right? It's not the root of the instruction.
Supplemental resource, yep.
Right, so what is, I'm guessing it's not a, I mean, a huge danger of teaching to the iReady test, I mean, there could be some of that, but we've got other tests as well, right? So we would be, we would be teaching exclusively to the iReady test.
So when you say, teaching to the iReady test, iReady is actually based on the content as Wisconsin standards. So teaching to the iReady test is not teaching, it's teaching the standards and assessing those standards. We do that already.
This is a small portion of, you know, again, we have, and Alan, how much, how many minutes do we dedicate to ELA instruction a day at elementary?
Ninety.
So there's ninety minutes of instruction that, that is the core instruction, and that's what the majority of this is going to be. And, and then the iReady is that supplemental piece. But the, the core that we're working on, that we're focusing on is that ninety minute section.
So I appreciate a lot of what's been asked and brought up. I feel like it's very clear that everyone at this table cares a lot about this item. I, I would like to just kind of ask a couple questions here. So the portion of the rating of instructional materials, there's three items here, rating of instructional materials, iReady text selector tool, iReady personalization parent letter. So we have three items here. And Alan, just for clarification, the rating of instructional materials, is that what you are saying you would be looking to edit further? Or is this, again, not the only piece in vetting, but one piece? So I have a few questions on this. If you don't mind answering each one individually, that would be helpful.
So it would definitely be our initial tool. So the tool does, as Mr. Kure looked at it, the bottom quart-, that bottom quartile does highlight areas where we would not include content for students. So that would be part. The social studies guidelines would be another part. And then based on even some of the social studies conversations, if it's not made into the guidelines, there are certain themes and topics that we would put a flag up and just ensure we've either vetted or excluded from students.
Okay, so let's stop.
To clarify, excluded to give us time to more thoroughly vet, yep.
Sure. So let's take just one step back here. So this rubric is, was created when?
Last year. Administrator, it's an administrative guideline with policy.
And this, I, I mean, I'm not asking this to be a trick question. You and I've had conversations about this rubric and the wording of it. When it was used for different items coming into the schools, books specifically, do you recall offhand how many titles, pages of books, the team at CSD went through to vet those, to make sure they were appropriate for shelves? I think you know what I'm getting at, but I, I'm happy to be more specific if board members would, if that's helpful. But I'm trying to get to the point of what has, what have CSD administrators and staff members, what are they used to insofar as going through very literally titles and using this specific rubric? And then their professional expertise and knowledge of the community, how many titles would you say they've done that with?
Okay, that's kind of a, get me a calculator. So what I can tell you is that last year, we vetted all classroom libraries at the elementary level with that rubric.
Correct, okay.
So coach, principal, reading teacher went into every single classroom and vetted all current classroom libraries. Because of the nature of libraries growing over time, just to make sure they were in alignment with the rubric, thousands and thousands of books.
Would you say that that is more than what's available on iReady currently? I understand where our board members are coming from, where you're wanting to know what's incoming and how often. So I, as a board member, would also like the assurance that at those times when there's new materials coming in, that we have a very specific plan in place, as far as perhaps our district librarian, our literacy coaches, seeing those lists, being able to use this rubric. And I would personally feel confident, because I feel like that's, that has happened last year with titles. So is that kind of the thought process, not necessarily handheld books that are going into the library, but the digital titles available to students?
That is accurate.
Okay.
My understanding, to build on that, is that this rubric of the page eight, twenty-five, twenty-one guideline is, is used to then create the more specific guideline, like in the social studies realm, so is this the sort of the starting point, I think you called it?
You are correct. It prompted, what it did was, it prompted for us additional themes that naturally seem to fall into those quadrants. So those themes or perhaps topics that we have noticed, there's more controversy or perhaps not appropriate for that particular grade level, would be those kinds of things we would be watching for. And some of these things, you just, we have to go through it together, meaning I with coaches, principals, and go through it together and processes together. And the tool get refined as we go. So we've, certainly our feet are on the ground, we have a process in place. It's, I think earlier, as discussed, if there again was content in there that iReady had created, looking at some of the themes for their particular content, we're probably just going to withhold, withhold those for a bit, so we have time to thoroughly vet those. But other topics and themes that we've already noticed through the social studies process and the use of the rubric, we, that's going to be a rapidly, we can rapidly find those. I mean, again, I went in and just started skimming, and you can, you can just, and what I did notice was a ton of nonfiction, which is, Wisconsin standards really emphasized the increasing of nonfiction content for students. So that's learning about the world and things and animals and people, and so that, that's the shift that you see present in iReady, less on fiction. So puts us in an easier, more efficient place.
So when I'm looking at this, just the agenda as is and the recommendation, from my perspective, what I'm hearing, I'm not hearing at the table concerns about math. What I'm hearing at the table are concerns about process related to titles that are reading. And when I'm thinking through the specific agenda and timelines, when you were talking about starting with math and having that bit of time for reading, I'm wondering, I'm just trying to remember when our, I believe one of the curriculum committee meetings was changed, right? There was one that was supposed to be on September twenty-seventh and is moved, and, oh, it's canceled, thank you. I'm just trying to think of a timeline here where maybe that plan that's a little bit more fleshed out is available for board members to see, and very much says, here's step one, the rubric, step two, you know, there's, you guys could probably let me know how many titles it is. If it's a thousand titles, it's a thousand titles. It's broken down into five hundred for so-and-so, twenty, I, I don't know. But some kind of clear breakdown of that. For me personally, I don't, I don't have a problem passing this as is with the reading in math, just because I do, from personal experience, remember the rubric being set up, remember how it was utilized with our books that were purchased in other ways. So I don't, I don't have a reticence with this. But if other board members really do have a strong reticence with it, I would, I would like to get to the point where our motion reflects maybe that timeline of having Alan present something to the curriculum committee more specific to the reading portion. So I, I don't mind making a motion and seeing where we're at. But for, for me, I would motion that we, I'm sorry, go ahead and say if there's more discussion, I'm sorry, Dave. I'm jumping ahead a little bit.
I guess I would just, with that, I guess just see that this is kind of, you know, just for, as we, if we implemented, vote to implement it this year, come back at the end of the school year and really get your feedback. And I guess I'd be very interested, I agree with Kate, on just the benefits of you, whoever is assessing all, you know, the review, how much time it's taking to go over all of these documents, you know, just to get a feel for how much it's, you know, we have the price tag of the software, but your time is very, very valuable, and it's taken away from other time. So I guess that would be, I'd really, and I really, I feel it's important that we really track the student time on it, that it's the, is it, what is it? I have it written down. Up to, is it forty-nine minutes a week or whatever?
Thirty to forty-some minutes.
Yeah, I just feel, I just feel that's important to keep it at that for this year. It's new and see where we're at. Those are my thoughts.
When are we looking to implement the reading part?
I think, Kirsten, you said the, like, the second, second week of October or somewhere in there?
Math.
Math, oh, math, yeah, I apologize.
So the reading would be the end of October? Okay, so, so you think you'd have the, the guidelines and everything ready for, to be presented before, before, yeah, it would have to be before the implementation. We've got a quick little committee meeting.
October, October eleventh. The original plan was to try and get the math started by October ninth, and then get the ELA portion or the reading portion started by October nineteenth.
So can you get these guidelines and all the vetting done by, by October thirtieth, when we want to start the reading?
That, that was the plan, and what we hadn't gotten done would not be turned on. So the only stuff that would be turned on would be the things that we had been able to get through.
And do you think by the October eleventh, we'd have, be able to present this, the guidelines that you're building off of this, the government's schedule, the rubric and?
Yes, sure.
Perhaps maybe with that, like, two or three titles and doing a mock review will come to this direction.
Sure, absolutely, yep.
Do you know if, when an educator is just using this, such as in the pilot, are they regularly seeing the specific books and lessons that the students are seeing in their lessons? Because every student's on their own path, and they might be at different grade levels. Is that, is, you know, is a teacher going in and seeing all of those specific books? Or are they more getting just like a report, you know, at the end, you know, going in and looking at the dashboard or whatever for that student? That's a kind of a question, like, you know, would, would we have a feel of what these student-facing, self-guided, you know, learning, what we're trying to approve here? Do the, are the teachers actually seeing that? Because during this time when the students are doing it, they're doing, you know, their small group at the desk or, you know, at their table, whatever.
At times, they're side by side with students, monitoring how they're working.
At times, you know, they'll see a thing, but, yeah.
The other thing that, when they do that, intervening with the yellow flag or the red X where things get turned off, they bring up those lessons with the, with the student and work through them or bring up the quiz, talk to me about how you answered these things, what did it look like? Have those conversations around these lessons. And so they do see all of it there. And in the same way that you looked at content, teachers look at content depending on, you know, what they need or where they're going with a lesson, just to see what students are learning.
Sure, but it's not necessarily the case that a third grade teacher would have seen every book or book excerpt in the third grade level, but just because their students were using the iReady.
No.
Correct, okay. I mean, my perspective, just, you know, having been on the board about a year and a half or so, is that this one in particular, it just seems very out of order compared to what I'm used to with things coming through the curriculum committee and then getting approved here. And typically, at this point, we would have had this discussion in curriculum committee about how this vetting was done, a more thorough review by my fellow board members on this content. And I feel like this whole, like, plan was just kind of like rushed through in the most, in like the last, like, week or two, when I had some concerns, saying, hey, there's hundreds of books in here, and I didn't even know that there were books in iReady. So I'm really not comfortable approving something that hasn't been vetted. It seems out of order, in my personal opinion. And I know that we've had some board members discussing, kind of wanting to fast-track the math lessons over, over that, which, okay, like, I think, I think that there is a lot of value in getting the K through two kids into the phonics and phonemic awareness lessons in iReady in relatively short order. But with, with math, I didn't spend as much time digging into the math lessons personally, and I hope that other people have, they have people reviewed them, like, where, kind of where are we on reviewing the math lessons? And one of the reasons I ask is just that, you know, iReady has a parent company, its name, Curriculum Associates, and, you know, they have like a big white paper on their website where they are, it's called culturally responsive mathematics teaching. And that might not necessarily be in line with how math is taught in Cedarburg. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But they have like this expert, his name is Dr. Mark Ellis, and he wrote this white paper about how math is used in iReady. And he's, he's honestly a scholar who uses the lens of critical race theory and applies that to mathematics, like, it's on his Google Scholar. So I would just say that I would, my only purpose in mentioning this is that I hope that a thorough review of the math lessons is also done, because the people that they're hiring to create their math content may or may not be in line with how we want mathematics taught in Cedarburg.
So as far as, I appreciate what you, what you shared, Elizabeth. My thought process is really more from a timeline perspective and from what's been shared administrative-wise. I don't feel my personal goal is to necessarily fast-track anything. My understanding for this evening was that we would have, from the, the committee meeting, that we would be seeing the iReady personalized instruction parent letter that had a lot of input from board members and the administration, and we would have that to go on. So I can understand to a degree, feeling a bit like there's other materials here that you weren't, that maybe several of us weren't anticipating. So I think for me, this comes down to an item that is optional, more or less, for parents, families, guardians, however we are speaking about our families here. And I, I would be interested to see of, once we get this letter out, how many of our parents do opt into this and are wanting to, wanting that? And if it is a large majority that don't, we need to be able to see what that plan is for those that aren't interested in that personal piece. So I think from my perspective, there's a lot of conversation at the table. And from a timeline perspective, I would be most comfortable with having some more of these pieces brought to the curriculum committee as well. I think that that's the, it'll take longer to do, but I feel like that had benefit, a benefit when it was done with social studies. So for this evening, I would like to ask, you know, our superintendent, our administrators, if we were to vote solely on getting the personalized instruction parent letter out, does that still afford you the opportunity, availability to go through these resources, share a plan prior to the next curriculum committee meeting? And would a- And would a potential curriculum committee meeting need to be held sooner rather than later to be able to get things rolling?
So the board would not vote on the letter. I mean, the letter is something that is done administratively to carry out what's, what's going on. But if, if the board would like to postpone and have us bring more back to that curriculum committee and, and reengage the discussion in October, we certainly can do that. Again, if there's one where, you know, a motion made that we can go ahead and get started with math and hold off on ELA, again, as administrators, we'll do what the board directs us.
So what was that white paper, what kind of math?
It's called culturally responsive mathematics teaching.
What is that?
I really don't know. But iReady has curriculum, like you would approve with a textbook, which is very different than the personalized instruction, so I can find out.
And I'm not saying that there's evidence of that type of mathematics teaching in this content, I'm just saying I want to make sure that what we have in the individualized learning is well-reviewed due to who they're hiring in general to work on their mathematics curriculum and content, that type of thing.
I would have to say we've seen none of it, because I would have heard about it from our teachers.
You don't know what it is, right? So how would you know?
Pardon? Our teachers review the materials all the time in working with students and they see it, so we've seen none of it.
None of what?
None of this CRT type of.
Okay.
Again, the district's been using this for almost two years now, so.
I can't imagine what it would be, I mean, like, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I have no idea.
A couple of things that, so as we look at other primary resources, the phrase culturally, culturally responsive can sometimes, and I've been told by companies, who's on the pages of the book? Is there, not necessarily equivalent, but there's full representation in what students are seeing in the book? The examples or illustrations used in the book don't put a student at a disadvantage from, because they have no context or understanding of that illustration based on their own background, so they pick things that are more relatable to all students. So it's just a sensitivity as designers create the pages and the content in books, and in this case, iReady content, there would have been more thought put into what students are seeing. So that's, that's like kind of a boots-on-the-ground part.
It's probably a different kind of math.
No, no, no. I had gone through a few math lessons and nothing jumped out at me, but again, it's just, it's a sample. It's, we did ask that question, is there any type of content that you would, people are objecting to in different areas of the country or different things like that? And they said, no, everything that we've put into the iReady personalized learning is, doesn't have representation in that way. So that was the comment from our representative the other day.
Is, what would be the plan, say a student goes home and says, Mom and Dad, this is what I had on iReady today, and they, you know, questioned it and called the teacher, is there a way to go back and find out? I would think there would be, what that student was working on.
We know their plan, we know exactly what lessons, how much time they worked on that lesson and where they are in the lesson and can track that very easily.
Okay. So you could just go right back to it.
So if we were to peel out the ELA and just vote on the math today, it sounds like it might not change the implementation plan, right? If we were to vote on that in October, as I've been hearing suggested, right? It wouldn't, it wouldn't change the, because you, no matter what, you're going to be working on this, the plan, the guidelines and all that and the vetting. And you're going to be presenting at the curriculum committee meeting on October 11th or whenever we have it. And we're gonna, we have the board meeting the next weekend, right? The 18th, it was the next week, what, first? So if we, if we did, if we did it that way, doing that, it's like the, kind of the normal order of things, where we, we have the presentation in the curriculum committee and we voted on just the ELA next time, does that sort of back, I mean, what's the, it sounds like it pretty much would be the same as if we were putting it today, just to give them more information.
Yeah, I think the one thing, the one thing that's in the back of my mind is, so, just so you're aware, the sooner we can start looking at titles and apply a process, the quicker we'll be ready. So I would rapidly be thinking about, okay, who am I, who am I going to convene? What are the tools we're going to use? What enhancements need to be made so that we're really thoughtful as we look at ELA content? And I want to go, but I don't want to get in front of you and then.
Well, I think based on the conversation that we've heard is, that is what we need to do on the front end.
Okay.
So it's not getting ahead, it's just being able, being able to provide the board the information that they, they need.
Okay.
So essentially, could it be that, you know, if we can piece out and get math going, because students already have their, they're done with iReady testing, they've got their scores, correct?
We still have the end of this week and then kindergarten starts a little later, we don't start them right away.
So if, if math is approved and hopefully we'll be starting the second week, would it be possible to have the vetting process start on the reading titles fairly soon? So that when we have the meeting on the 11th for the curriculum committee, it can be shown, well, this is how many we've gone through, this is how we're looking at them, if we found anything problematic, this is what we found and this is what we did, so that it's getting that process started sooner, plus it's also, you know, giving some reassurance to those who still have questions and then that would kind of make it easier to start when you want to.
Correct. That's reasonable.
How are the math lessons reviewed? They weren't included in that attachment in, in board docs? Is it literally a teacher, like, going through and like viewing each, like, animated lesson? Or how does, how is that review done?
So it's not, there's no way you can review every single lesson of the teacher?
Right.
And so they've gone through, we did it two years ago, teachers were in to start before we'd been used with, and as were some on the pilot team, viewing everything, going through, what does this look like, and viewing them that way. And then over the last two years, you know, we've looked at them many different ways. Teachers can go in and if they see a student in class who needs some reinforcement in something previously, they can assign that lesson. So they go into lessons all the time, would this be appropriate? Oh, this is the standard, is this something maybe I should have this student work on? So they do that often. I would not say we've seen every lesson.
Okay. And there's so many ways to teach math, I mean, even as parents, we, or children learn math in ways that we didn't. What was the teacher's feedback and how it was aligned or not aligned with like Bridges or the new middle school math curriculum?
Yeah, there is a Bridges alignment document that we had and it aligns very closely. And that was a big deal for us. We didn't want to do anything that was contrary to our core resources.
Because that's working well.
And conversely, whenever we've looked at math programs, whenever you can provide students a concept and perhaps show it to them in a different way, that's really good for them. So can they take something that they've learned, a concept that they understand, and a methodology that this resource perhaps has taught, and now can you do it this way in a new, in a new way? So we looked at Ready Math, which is also a program, so there was not, and, and one thing, just for full assurance, anyone watching this from home, I mean, we would never consider a resource that wasn't standards-aligned. So the board approved the Wisconsin standard, so these, these test items, if you will, were created off of Wisconsin standards. So there's a great deal of competence in the, the authors that create those test problems, because we're putting stock, lots of districts throughout the country are putting stock in using this, and they have expectations that the results will be productive and positive for students in lots of ways, including on their state assessment. So again, state standard developed test items, so reassurance there for everyone.
Okay, I would just like to add on the letter, just to make sure that we get full disclosure here, because when we, we use educational technology, there's a little bit of a, I think, an understanding or an impression that the district has vetted it and that, you know, the, the interaction is basically between the student and the school, student and the teacher, whatever. The letter does a good job of explaining that that's not necessarily the case. I would, I do think there's a couple of things we need to maybe bolster in the letter. The first one is under item three of the fourth paragraph, where it says that under the DPA, Curriculum Associates shares the identified student data with third parties. And I, I think we should add unidentified third parties, because we had asked for that information, that wasn't given to us. And the, the second item is that we asked Curriculum Associates to anonymize the data and not just to de-identify it for the students, and they wouldn't do that. So I would add those pieces, and then I think we've got, you know, the, you've got a good document that parents can make an informed decision on, on what they want to do with it. Or, yeah, motion?
I was attempting to go back into the past meetings for the motions that were made for the wording here, but I'm having a bit of trouble navigating to find when that, that particular meeting was. Again, just from my perspective, I'm, I'm comfortable with what's presented here, I'm comfortable with the talent and the time and the dedication that our administrators and educators and staff have previously put into vetting resources. As far as the rubric, rubric goes, it's not, in my opinion, the best language, but I'm comforted and have been comforted knowing that it's not the be-all, end-all, there are steps after that. So at this time, I would be, I, I would start with the motion to approve it as presented. And I'm open to other board members and friendly amendments.
Can we still have further discussion at this point?
Or you can make another motion, we didn't get a second.
I'm not going to make a motion to approve, I, I really appreciate all the time you guys have put into it and I really value your input. And there's been a lot of concerns discussed. I think what's really a sticking point for me is the amount of time that the students would spend on this. There's so much time spent on the content, there's concerns about the data. To do all of this for five to 10 minutes a day, I'm just not sure I see the value of. And one of my biggest concerns is, is that that's, that time's going to grow and our kids are going to spend more and more time on receiving computer-generated instruction rather than personal. So I, I think for me, I'm not ready to move forward on that.
I would be willing to second on your motion.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion on that particular motion? All right, call in favor?
Hi.
opposed? No?
Nay.
I think that's five to two, no. Do I have a motion on the math instruction perhaps that we kind of talked about, perhaps doing up in math?
Is it, can I ask?
No, go ahead, I'm sorry, I was just taking a breath and moving, you're fine.
I mean, is it possible to put together a motion that would have the kind of the, the results of the more thorough vetting and review of both math and the ELA at the next curriculum committee and then bring that to the board? Or are we?
We could do that, I would like to get some input from, perhaps from Kirsten on what that would do, if we, could we be looking at delaying it? How, so if we, if we did it, if we put, if we did a vote on the math in October and didn't approve it, we were looking at, we were looking at starting it next week, I think, right?
October 9th.
October 9th.
We have to do the parent permission.
Right, okay.
So we have to do the parent permission.
No, I, I think we could just do one parent permission, because the parent permission is based on the student data of using it and then.
That's true. Yeah.
Yeah, as I mentioned, I'm open to friendly amendments. I, I'd like to see, I, I think there's valuable input at the table insofar as basically wanting an audit of how valuable the time is and the time spent from the instructors. And at this, at the same point in time to even get that started, the letter has to go out for parents to even have the opportunity to say, yes, I'd like this information, or hey, no, I don't. And if we have an overwhelming response of parents who say, no, I'm not interested in this, for whatever reason, we still, we need to hear more about that secondary plan. So I think for me, just leaving this on the table with nothing doesn't afford that opportunity to hear from parents to begin with, doesn't afford the opportunity to continue vetting and looking at those math resources, looking at those reading resources. So as I mentioned, for me, the motion was a starting point, I'm very much agreeable to amendments to it, that helps it, move it along.
I think the hard part is if we send out this letter and then decide not to do it, how do we explain that to the parents? Am I missing something on that?
Well, the letter would go out if we, one, one of the, like, let's, for example, so I made a motion on math, we approved math, then it would go out.
For math or?
It would go out in, in general, because it's a general letter. And then it should cover everything, it should be, that should be, I think that would cover everything, is the way I understand it.
Yeah, the letter would cover the use of the tool, not necessarily the lessons that are going to be used.
I mean, I have a lot of the same concerns that Kate has. I guess I'd be, I really would like to tie something on the motion to limit the amount of time the students are on this and also that this is really, we are going to evaluate this at the end of this school year to, instead of just being like, okay, iReady goes forward, just to see how, there is a lot of time and the money and if we feel it's worth it for going into next year. That's, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I think that would be part of the, the process. We have an annual, like, it would probably tie into the assessments, the annual assessment report would be my guess.
Correct.
But I think it would also come, what happens a lot is we'll have, at the curriculum committee meeting, there might be updates on how things are going this, I think we saw it with the pilot, there were, every, every couple of months, there was an update on, on how it was looking and things like that. So I, I would make a motion to approve the math portion with the letter having the components that I mentioned and then table one of the, the rest of it until the, after the curriculum committee, I think, the curriculum committee advances it.
I would second your motion.
Any discussion?
Would you use the language of tabled or postponed?
Yeah, I don't think either one, yeah.
I wouldn't even use tabled, just the motion to approve the use of the math.
Yeah, good point, yeah. So, yeah, the motion is to approve the math, iReady has been with the, that is the letter.
And, go ahead. And the, and you two both and Journey, you feel confident that the vetting done of the student-facing personalized instruction is up to the level of the vetting done with the Bridges content, the new middle school content, like, you're confident that that has been thoroughly vetted, ready to go? Because I, that's my.
I don't, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I don't have any apprehension right now, although certainly I can work with math, excuse me, I can certainly work with Alan on the math portion and, and we can do, you know, I'm not going to say a, a total vetting, like, looking at every lesson, but, I mean, there's certain, you know, you're going to catch themes and having a former background as math teacher, I think I would be able to, to be able to do that too.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So in being that we've used this for two years and there haven't been any complaints from our teachers, come with anything problematic?
No, I can give you an explicit example, but I have heard of opportunities where a problem was approached in a unique way, was a great discussion point in classroom. So that's, that speaks to adaptability for a student, because not everything will always be presented to them exactly the same way. So it really is a test of their skills to be able to take what I know and now apply it in this new format. So that was a positive, actually.
And the only reason I'm calling that out is because, again, it feels out, out of order in terms of how things have typically been done, where we've always had a pilot and those teachers have very carefully reviewed that and we've kind of discussed that vetting before it coming to be approved and now we're being. And now we're being asked to approve this and then some additional vetting is going to be done after the fact. So, that's my only reason for kind of calling that out and asking about that.
We do have precedent for that because we've already made that agreement with impact for social studies, that we would approve the use of the tool and that teachers would use the rubrics to vet whatever ends up being used in the classroom. So, there is precedent for that.
Yeah, to a, I would argue to a lesser degree. It was like about the current events articles.
Dave, would you mind just stating your motion once more?
The, the motion that's on the table right now is for including with the math section of the IREDDI individualized learning with the caveats that we addressed the, the letter to include those two points that made about the unidentified third parties and the anonymized data. Those are things that were.
Sure, sure.
In the curriculum committee.
Yep.
And that were in that draft letter. So, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so, is it six, one? Six, one, okay. Thank you. Good discussion. I appreciate every, every perspective on this.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to the next recommendation, Ben Irwin, Director of Business Services, will present a recommendation regarding the Bridge Road property lease.
Yep. So, the next three agenda items are all annual topics and they've all been discussed and vetted through the Personnel and Finance Committee earlier this month. The first one's looking at our annual lease renewal with the Bridge Road property. As you know, we have 20 acres about of property off of Bridge Road in the town of Cedarburg. And over the last couple of years, we've leased it out to local farmers to use the land and collect a little bit of revenue from that. Couple of years ago, we did bid it out or put a request for proposals out there for the community and got some bids to increase the revenue we collect from it. But overall, overall, we don't collect a, a ton of revenue relative to our overall budget. So, what we'd be looking at for 2024 is to renew that lease with the current tenant for the current rate, which is $2,500 per year.
I would make a motion to approve the Bridge Road property lease.
I will second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the lease? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion there again, this way, thank you, Ben.
Next agenda item looks at our renewal for dental insurance for '24. Our employee benefits renew on 1-1 each year. And so, for dental, we got a proposal from our current carrier, which is Delta Dental, and they proposed a 0% increase for '24, which would continue the current trend we've had for the last couple of years of 0% increase. Actually, one year we had a 5% decrease. So, it's been pretty competitive and that's an easy to maintain within the budget. And so, we're proposing to renew that for '24 with a 0% increase for next year. Yep.
I motion to approve the dental insurance renewal.
I will second.
You got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the dental insurance? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ben.
And then, the next agenda, agenda item looks at our cash flow borrowing for the year. As you know, we have periods during the course of the year that we have shortage of cash flow, just as a result of how our revenues come in versus our expenditures. Expenditures are pretty predictable, but cash flow comes, or revenue comes in in big chunks over the course of the year from the tax levy and state aid. And so, over the course of the year, between November and kind of March, we get to a period where we essentially run out of money in our bank as we're keeping up with our expenditures per month, but we just don't get that revenue that we need to maintain that cash flow. So, the good news is that over the years, as we've built up our fund balance in our general fund, we've had to rely less and less on our cash flow borrowing. A couple of years ago, we're borrowing close to $4 million. Last year was $2.5 million and this year we're proposing $1.5 million for the cash flow borrow for November to March. This is especially important as, as interest rates increase over the last couple of years. Last year, the rate was right around 4% or at 4%. This resolution would put in place not to exceed 6%. The process for this cash flow borrow involves a couple of other districts because it's consortium, so we can try to get our best rate, try to get the best rate out there. So, the sale of proceeds actually occurs in early October and so we'll know the rate at that point, but it won't exceed 6%. So, the resolution we're bringing forward is to borrow, cash flow borrow 1.5 million to not exceed an interest rate of 6%.
Thank you for the history on all that. It was great to hear that we are borrowing less and less every year. I would make a motion to have a resolution authorizing temporary borrowing of the amount not to exceed 1.5 million.
I'll second.
The rate not to exceed 6%.
Thank you. Correct.
The motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, the last recommendation is for the acceptance of donations to the district. This month, there are four donations. $10,000 from the Cedarburg Athletic Booster Club to support the CHS softball and baseball field turf. $10,000 from the Orthopedic Hospital of Wisconsin to purchase equipment for CHS athletics. $4,950 from the Parkview PTO to purchase classroom supplies through teacher grants and $2,236.80 from the Parkview Dads Club for the purchase of 15 stools for Parkview Maker Space. The total, if the board approves this, the total board approval for September would be $27,186.80.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the donations?
I'll likely abstain from this one, just to be on the safe side, but I appreciate all the donations.
All right, great. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
One abstention.
Oh, I'm, oh, yeah, yeah. So, so, yeah, just for the record, any abstentions?
One.
One abstention, yeah. All right. So, Miss Pinkage, is that standing? All right, so, next, we have committee reports. Curriculum committee.
On August 30th, on August 30th, the curriculum committee met. We discussed two topics. The first is a resource trial of the grade six geography text from McGraw-Hill. It would go along with the New World History Book, which was already approved. And it's my understanding that this new geography text would be available in each classroom but not given out per student. So, we have copies of that in starting review. Next, we discussed the IREDDI personalized learning. Specifically, we focused on the parent letter regarding the IREDDI diagnostic assessment and metadata that's generated from the students taking the assessment and a copy of that letter was in board docs.
Excellent. PNF committee, Kate.
So, the PNF committee met on September 6th. A number of the items we discussed were just voted on, the Bridge Road land lease, the dental insurance renewal and the cash flow borrowing. In addition to those topics, we also discussed the 2024 health insurance renewal. At this point, it was informational and there are more quotes forthcoming, I think, in the weeks since September 6th. I believe we'll be looking at that at the next meeting on October 18th. In addition, we also had informational information from the 2324 budget.
All right. Very good. Then I will now entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise its responsibility pursuant to 19.851(c) of the Wisconsin statute. A, administrator, administrator performance-based retention bonuses. We may then, we will then convene into open session where the board may, I'm sorry, the board may reconvene into open session and may take action on one or more of the executive session items, which would include approval of the minutes from the executive session meeting of August 16, 2023. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned into executive session. Thank you.